Good afternoon. Welcome to the Volusia County School Board Workshop. Today is February the 11th, 2025. The time now is 12:34 PM. In just a moment, I'm going to ask that you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and reflection. So at this time, will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Here today with me, on my far left, we have Mrs. Donna Brosmer, representing District Four, Mrs. Krista Goodrich, representing District Two, Dr. Gilbert Evans, our school board attorney, moving over to my far right, we have Ms. Celeste Gilmore, our agency clerk, Mrs. Jessie Thompson, representing District Three, Mr. Ruben Cologne, our vice chair, representing District Five, Dr. Carmen Balgobin, our superintendent, and I'm Jamie Haynes, representing District One. We have three items today on the agenda for the workshop. The first item is Item 2.01, Exceptional Student Education. Dr. Balgobin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Jacquet Copley, our executive director for Exceptional Student Education, and I think she's got some team members here. Couple of things I wanted to share with the board and those of you who are listening or joining us. As we all know, that our district is successfully so far managing a DOJ settlement agreement. So I have to give kudos to this team because not only are we managing a DOJ settlement agreement, but in addition to that, we are looking at our work that we're doing in ESC. And we are working and putting that structure in place for a full continuum of services. So they will be sharing with you some of what that inner workings is all about as we are looking at that full continuum of services. And then the team will answer any questions that you may have. Ms. Copley, please introduce. I think you have a few members from your team here.
Yes, I do. Good afternoon, Chair Haynes, school board members, and Superintendent Dr. Balgobin. So here I have with me my assistant director, Casey Lamb. And then in the audience, I have all of my ESC coordinators. So I'm going to introduce them one at a time. So please stand. We have Lita Grillo, who's a coordinator of elementary. Stephanie DeGracia, who is over our access and low incidence programs. We have Sue Hopkins, who is over secondary. We have Kathy Galati, who's over transition. And Tom Allard, who takes care of our VR grant. And behind Tom is Dr. Spidel, who is in charge of related services and also reporting.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for this opportunity this afternoon to speak with you about an update on exceptional student education in Volusia County schools. Our presentation supports Policy 303, which governs special programs and procedures for exceptional students. We will focus on guardrails two and three during this presentation. Today, I will provide you with an overview of ESC programs, key initiatives, compliance updates, and our next steps in ensuring that every exceptional student in our district receives the support they need to succeed. We want to start off this afternoon by highlighting the annual ESC family conference that took place on Saturday, February 1st. We have a short video to highlight that conference for you this afternoon. This event connects our families and district with community resources to help support their child's educational journey. We had over 400 registered attendees, 45 community agencies that attended, and over 50 VCS employees that volunteered to support the family conference. You know, we want to make sure that not only are we setting those strong goals, but we believe that we have to maximize the potential of each and every student. We have to have people who have strength that they can trust, we have mutual respect for the work, and that we are doing this together. Because it's not the school alone, it's not the families alone, but it's us jointly working together to ensure the success of all students in Volusia County. Jake is happy to find people that he knows from his adventures here. But it's been helpful and great to just talk to faces rather than online.
Well, to begin with, this type of resources that you offer is within the school system. And where do you have more opportunity to serve a family than within the school? You have everyone at the different agencies and the different providers there in this one place.
So thank you. It was an amazing Saturday, and we look forward to continuing this practice. So as we get into the presentation today, we're going to start with IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. As a reminder, our work in ESC is grounded in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It is a federal law that ensures all students with disabilities receive the services and supports necessary to access the general education curriculum. IDEA stands on six key principles of free appropriate education, appropriate evaluations, individualized education plans, least restrictive environments, parent and student participation in decision making, and procedural safeguards. These principles ensure that we address the unique educational needs of every student and empower them to engage in high levels of learning.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. I have a lot of questions, and they tend to be kind of slide specific. So I just want to know if I should ask them per slide, or do you want me to wait until the end?
I think at the end.
The end?
Yeah. Thank you.
So this slide highlights our IDA funding that Volusia County schools receives. And it's broken up into four categories: personnel, professional learning, community-based instruction, and student supplies. And so personnel is our support preparer professionals, bus assistants, program specialists, ESC assistant principals are some of the personnel that are covered through our IDA funding to support student needs. Our professional learning that we've taken place this year are nonviolent crisis training, bouncy dog, which is a K-2 separate class self-regulation training, and managing the cycles of acting out. Community-based instruction is the hands-on approach that we take with ESC students into the community to practice life, vocational and social skills in real-world settings. It helps our students develop life skills, vocational skills, social and communication skills, and independent living skills. Student supplies include mobility equipment, sensory items, communication devices, and applications. As we continue to work, we will continue to make sure that our resources maximize the impact on our student learning. As Dr. Balgobin mentioned at the beginning, the district is under a Department of Justice settlement. Volusia County entered into the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice based on an ADA, an American with Disabilities Act complaint that was filed in 2018. The settlement continues through August of 2026, and there are key areas that we work to continue to grow strong in. That is limiting the number of suspensions for our students with disabilities, addressing ADA complaints promptly, providing ongoing training for our staff in relation to ESC compliance, reducing the number of law enforcement involvement with our students with disabilities, and monitoring our classroom removals and behavior interventions. By implementing these measures, we have seen great improvement in ensuring equality and also legal compliance with all of our ESC students. Education Modified is a technology platform that we use in ESC, and it has been a tremendous help. So to enhance our compliance and streamline tracking of services provided to students, we have implemented Education Modified. It is a research-based educational technology platform. Last year, in the 2324 school year, we piloted across the district. We have been able to provide ongoing professional learning to teachers this school year, and we will continue to do so as we grow in the usage of this platform. This platform enables teachers, general education, and ESC teachers to acknowledge IEPs within the system, track student accommodations and goals as highlighted in their IEPs, and it also allows our ESC separate class students to maintain lesson plans, along with our support pair professionals keep their logs for daily work with students inside of the platform. So I know there's a lot of numbers on this next slide, but I just want to highlight a few things for you. This shows our usage from inception until date. And what this does is it highlights every single form that we use in the platform. Not every teacher uses every form. But I did want to highlight the IEP acknowledgement form. This is a form that is used at the beginning of the year when we acknowledge IEPs. So you're going to see the trend of those numbers go down, and we want them to go down because we only acknowledge IEPs again when there is a change in service. I also would like for you to take note that we've, at this current school year, we've had almost 3 million submissions. And we're very excited about the tracking of student accommodations. The accommodation tracking form has 1.5 million submissions. This was an area of growth for us identified in the DOJ settlement. And we have also received acknowledgement from the Department of Education in Florida of what a great new tool this is and how our documentation is a lot more clear and understandable as we present it to the state. So the next few slides will take you through the usage by month. So we have total submissions by month, and we have accommodations tracking by month. Accommodations tracking is done by all teachers in all settings for students. The next slide shows you support facilitation logs and consultation log submission. Support facilitation logs are completed by ESC teachers that push into the general education classroom to support students. Consultation logs are completed by ESC teachers working with a general education teacher to support student learning. This slide shows you all separate class lesson plan submissions and para-support log submissions. The separate class lesson plan submissions are completed by ESC teachers serving students in a separate class setting. Para-professional logs are submitted weekly by our support para-professionals. By leveraging this technology, we are proving efficiency and ensuring that every student's IEP is properly executed. We have been able to reduce paperwork for ESC teachers. We've also, like I said before, been able to receive positive accolades from DOE. The next couple of slides will take you through our Volusia County ESC quarterly audits. This is a very proactive process that was started here in Volusia County. And we take this process to conduct quarterly internal audits on each school. So our process is that we randomly select two students from each school each quarter. Schools are given the names of those students, and they must submit all documentation related to IEP services that are being provided. Schools receive an ESC report card at the conclusion of the audit of giving a score of between 1 and 10, 1 being low, 10 being great. So with evaluating compliance, each quarter, Ms. Lamb and I meet with each principal and assistant principal to go over their ESC report card and see if there's any additional support that we can give them. The next slide shows you an example of what a report card looks like. So this is a perfect 10 report card that was given to a school this nine weeks. Each school is scored in six different areas. The first area at the top left is the state audit. That is when we take a kid's IEP services and compare it to the documentation we receive for the school, tracking those services. The next one is discipline. We look at discipline in two different ways. We look at the number of students that have been suspended for five or more days, and schools must have IEP meetings or suspension review meetings in order to document that they are talking about the student, make sure we have the right supports in place for that student. So they gain points for making sure that their documentation and that their meetings have taken place. The next part of discipline is the discipline comparison, where we compare the total number of referrals to the number of referrals that are received by ESC students. And so in that discipline comparison, we want to make sure that we're not disproportionate and that we're continuing to reduce the number of referrals received by ESC students related to their total school population. Number three is LRE, least restrictive environment. For least restrictive environment, we look at the students that are zoned for that school, not students that schools receive because of program and/or variances. So we look at two areas. We look at our regular class, and we look at our separate class. And we want to make sure that our regular class numbers continue to increase and that our separate class numbers continue to decrease and/or stay the same. That's how schools earn those points. And then if you go back up to the top on the right-hand side, we always take a look at IEPs and EPs for our gifted students that are out of date. So when we pull this report, we're making sure that the meetings have taken place within the timeframe and also that the event has been locked and focused, and that qualifies it as an in-date IEP or EP. And so schools get credit for making sure that they keep timelines ready for IEPs and EPs. And the next one is Teams Feedback and Monitoring. That is when our program, our district program specialists, go out to support schools. So we need to keep that two-way communication going. So we track that in Microsoft Teams. So the district program specialist goes out to support a school, whether it's an ASD program or a VE mild program, and they document not only what they've done, but also give actionable steps for their work and the schools. So it's the school's responsibility to go into that same Excel sheet and comment and let us know what they've done, what they're working on, what they still need support in. So if that's kept up to date, then the school receives points for that. The last area that schools get points for is called transition. And so this is when we're looking at our transition assessments for students as they matriculate. We start at 12 years old. So elementary students do receive the transition assessments, where we talk about what you want to do when you grow up and things like that. And so the one area that I do want you to note is legal. That is not an area that's scored for a school. That is a point of information. We make sure all schools know and understand the students on their campus that are represented by legal counsel and/or an advocate. So when schools receive their score and additional comments, like I said, Ms. Lamb and I meet with each of them individually, and we go over their report card, whether they got a perfect 10 or not. We want to make sure that we're supporting all schools in relation to compliance. So these audits help us to identify strengths, areas of improvement, ensure compliance across the district. Our use of Education Modified has helped schools to improve their scores with the ability to track and pull student data electronically. I do want to point out that my collaboration with the elementary and secondary executive directors have been an integral moving part of making sure this work continues to move forward. The next slide highlights our current range of ESC service delivery models, from least restrictive to most restrictive environments, ensuring that students receive the appropriate level of support. The graphic here represents our concurrent continuum of services. The general education options in gold and yellow on the screen are regular class placement, where students spend between 80 to 100% of their time with their non-disabled peers. The resource placement in yellow is where students spend 40 to 79% of their school week with their non-disabled peers. Support services offered at these levels is consultation, support facilitation, co-teach, and therapies, including occupational, physical, speech, and language. Our support facilitation model is where ESC teacher collaborates with a general education teacher to provide strategies, accommodations, and modifications to support the student in a general education classroom. The ESC teacher doesn't necessarily directly instruct the student, but instead offers guidance and expertise to help the general education teacher meet the student's needs. Consultation. In this model, an ESC teacher works with a general education teacher to provide advice, resources, strategies for supporting the student. The ESC teacher may not directly interact with the student, but offer suggestion on how to modify curriculum, classroom, environment, or teaching strategies to meet the individual needs of that student. The goal of this model is that the general education teacher has the support and tools necessary to effectively include the student in the classroom. Next is co-teaching. In this model, the ESC teacher and general education teacher work together in the same classroom to instruct students, including those with disabilities. Both teachers share the responsibility of planning, teaching, and assessing students. Co-teaching allows for differentiated instruction, helping students to succeed in an inclusive setting. The section in blue highlights our separate class options. We have a separate class placement where students spend less than 40% of their school week with their non-disabled peers. We also offer therapy in this setting. This may be in small group or individual. Our current separate class settings are our ASD, Autism Spectrum Disorder class, our EBD, Emotional Behavior Disability class, our modified class for students with intellectual disabilities, and IABLE, our Intensive Academic Behavioral Learning Environment. We also have multi-varying exceptionalities, our Multi VE, and mild varying exceptionalities, Mild VE. Our ASD class is designed for students with ASD, who may have challenges with communication, social interactions, and behavior regulation. This class provides a structured learning environment, visual supports, and social skills training. Our EBD class supports significant emotional and behavior challenges that impact a student's abilities to succeed in the general education classroom, their structured routines, behavioral interventions, and social skills learning. The goal of this class is to help children learn to regulate their behaviors to transition back into a least restrictive environment if possible. Next is our modified class. This class is for students with intellectual disabilities, designed for students who have significant cognitive impairments and need a regularly high-structured environment. The students need modified curriculum so that they can focus on functional academics, life skills, and adaptive behavior. Also, we have IABLE. IABLE is our Intensive Academic Behavioral Learning Environment. This instruction is based on the student's IEP. It's a smaller class size with intensive behavior support, a structured learning environment, social skills training. And so the purpose of the IABLE classroom is to provide an intensive academic behavioral support for students who need a structured and therapeutic environment. We have Multi VE, which is our multi-varying exceptionalities, and this serves students with multiple disabilities that affect their academic, communication, and adaptive functioning. This class is highly specialized based on the combination of the students' needs, and students often have a blend of academic instruction, therapy, and assistive technology in this classroom. And lastly, in the blue section, our separate class section, is our Mild VE, Mild Varying Exceptionalities. This supports students with mild disabilities, including learning, language impairments, or mild intellectual disabilities. These students do follow our standard curriculum, but need additional academic or behavioral support. So the goal is to develop these students' skills to be successfully integrated into the general education classroom. And the last section is green, our other separate environments. And so this is hospital homebound, this is off-campus instruction, separate schools or residential placement for students who have more intense support, who need more intense support outside of their traditional school setting. The next slide you will see is our enhanced ESC service delivery models. This is what we're looking to help support and increase and provide the support students need. These delivery model enhancements will increase access to ESC services across all schools. Our work in enhancing our service delivery models have been collaborative with teachers, administrators in Volusia County, and we've also worked with our neighboring districts as well. There are four enhancements on this graphic that are highlighted in yellow that I would like to speak with you about today. There's also one in blue. The one in blue is our intensive class. This is currently our Multi VE classroom, and so this one is just a language change so that we can match the language of the state. The four highlighted in yellow, first one is a behavior support teacher. A behavior support teacher A behavior support teacher provides instruction and support to students in grades K-12 who develop moderately adverse behaviors that interfere with learning and need specially-designed instruction in social skills and social communication. These students participate in the general education classroom, but need more support in social, emotional learning to navigate and generalize these skills. The next one is the E S C support class. The E S C support class is a model for K-12 that is that is needed for a small-group classroom setting for S D I, our specially-designed instruction, because they are at least two years below grade-level standards for specific subjects such as math, E L A, science, or social studies. It could also include independent functioning, social, and organizational skills. This class is for students that need adjustment to instruction to vary at the pace and depth of learning. The E S C support class is not a self-contained environment. The next one is the E S C separate class. This model supports for students in grades K-12 with cognitive deficits resulting in global deficiencies in the following: curriculum and learning, social and emotional, independent functioning and communication, and there also may be a need for healthcare needs. And lastly, in the most restrictive environment would be the A S D I N D Intensive Behavior Class. This model is support for students in K-12 with significant cognitive and global deficits that have severe intensive behavioral needs resulting in severe physical aggression. So as we have been taking a look at where we need to move forward, we have been reviewing our current models. We have been evaluating program placement for effectiveness. We have been looking at the geographical needs to reduce student travel. We've also been aligning the I E P goals for individualized support. The enhancements to our E S C service delivery continuum will be a phase and approach over the next couple of years. We will continue to work with collaborative partners within our district, outside of our district, and especially our V C S teachers, administrators, and parents as we move forward. One exciting group is our E S C Advisory Committee. Our E S C Advisory Committee is truly the strength of our department. We are committed to collaborating with families, educators, and community members. This group meets monthly to discuss E S C-related concerns and improvements. Their perspective is very vital to our work. This community includes parents, educators, and community stakeholders. They provide recommendations for service enhancements. They also play a crucial role in supporting our students. Because by working together, we know that we can continue to enhance the educational outcomes for all students. So as we move forward, we continue to focus on expanding teacher training and professional learning, strengthening parent engagement through workshops and resources, continuing compliance monitoring to ensure quality E S C service delivery. In closing, we remain committed to ensuring every exceptional student in Volusia County receives the support they need to thrive. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions and or discussion.
Thank you. Mrs. Brosmire, would you like to go first?
Okay. It was good to hear the presentation first because it did answer some of my questions. So I appreciate that. And it's nice to see you. I want you to know how much I enjoyed and appreciated the the E S C Family Conference and Event. It was really helpful because this is a new area for me. It was really helpful to be able to speak to a lot of the service providers too and and learn from them. So I'm gonna kind of go through these slides, and I had made notes of questions, and I'll see what I still have left. On the, my first one is on the IDEA slide. I just wondered how we define appropriate public education. I don't, appropriate tends to be kind of a loose loosely-defined word, so I just wondered how we structure it.
Are you talking about F A P? The first one?
I don't know what the slide number is. It's it's the
But the principles on it?
Uh, yes, it's the the number one of the six principles, yes. Free, appropriate, public education. I was just curious to know how, I guess it's the government defines appropriate.
Yes, we, and we have lots of guidelines and procedures that we follow through I D E A. And part of the free, appropriate education is making sure that we are using our I E P teams and data to guide our decisions. That is not in isolation. That is a collaborative effort.
Okay, thank you. Who is our behavioral consultant?
Dr. Ben Springer.
I'm sorry, Springer?
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious to know who that is. I don't think I've met him. And what exactly does he do?
So Dr. Ben Springer's role was a part of the Department of Justice settlement. So he meets actually in our last round of audits, he met with all principals along with Casey and I to specifically go over their discipline data. He also, a principal can email questions, concerns. We do schedule visits with him to physically come to Volusia to help support certain schools or high-needs situations in terms of behavior.
Okay, thank you. What kind of, what kind of feedback are you getting from teachers who are using the Education Modified system? I recall that it's relatively new. Are you getting good participation from that?
Yes, we are. We're getting great participation from it. And teachers have been very vocal. We've been able to listen, and we already have a list of changes for next year that is going to make their world even a little bit better. So what we've been doing this year is making sure that as we've rolled out the full implementation across the district in every classroom with every teacher, that we continue to listen. Because once it gets into the hands of our teachers, the end user, we want to make sure that we continue to listen so we can continue to make improvements. And so just, just to give you an idea of a simple improvement, right now, when a teacher clicks for an accommodation, there's a drop-down box. And so instead of having the drop-down box next year, the accommodation is just gonna be there for them in the click. So just that little quick, instead of taking 10 seconds to click a drop-down box, they're right there in front of you, and you can just click on the ones that the child has used for the day. So those are the improvements that we're continuing to modify the program.
Well, that sounds, that sounds useful. What is a compliance audit? I think you touched on that. So the I E P is annual, but the compliance audits are quarterly?
Yes, so this is a proactive measure that Volusia County has taken to ensure that we meet our compliance standard. And so at every quarter, each school is given two names of students randomly. They don't know who those kids are. They don't know what program that they are being served in.
The POP test?
It's a POP, yep. And so then what they're required to do is to provide the service logs for that student and the service logs for any related services such as speech, O T P T. And then my team, along with district placement specialists, take a look at each school. We have a calendar that we use in a very methodical way that we use to make sure that the I E P and the documentation match. And so after that, that's where I was explaining the report card. Schools then receive an E S C report card, which Ms. Lamb and I review with each team individually.
Is the report card sort of a universal way to do this? This kind of a random question that just occurred to me. Is it something that is unique to V C S, or is it related to the D O J settlement, or where does the report card fit in?
It is unique to V C S. It is homegrown right here in Volusia County. And, but it was based on the feedback that we received from not only the D O J settlement, but also from state complaints.
Okay. Thank you. I think my last questions are are all kind of interrelated, and they have to do with the, the, what I realize is a very complex situation with violent students. We had a report last week of of a teacher who was having to deal with a student with 80 felonies. That, that kind of, and and teachers who are being assaulted, physically assaulted by their by their students. I'm curious to know how we handle E S C students who behave that way compared to how we handle gen ed students who behave that way. Because I understand the D O J settlement requires fewer discipline referrals, but there's a real risk, especially when, when maybe the the I E P is related to they're gifted, or, you know, they're they're high-functioning, but they're violent. So how do we, how do we accommodate both of those needs? Because the teachers need to feel safe too.
Yes, 100%. And so one of the pieces of the I E P, if we have a student that is demonstrating abnormal behaviors or aggressive behaviors, is called the Behavior Intervention Plan. And so that is a plan that is created within the school and the I E P team to identify what the behaviors are, what are the root causes of the behaviors, and what are the interventions we need to put in place for that student so that we can decrease those behaviors. And so behavior intervention plans are reviewed by teams on a regular basis, and sometimes they do change frequently depending on the level of behavior or the change in behavior. We also have crisis plans that are developed within the I E P if it's something that a behavior that we may not see often, but it is an escalated behavior that we need to implement a crisis plan for.
Two things. I'd like to know where High Banks and River View fit with any of these programs, since they are alternative schools. And, and what was my other question? Well, let's start with that one, because I forgot the other one for the
So in terms of High Banks and River View, that is where our I A B L program is housed. So that's our most intensive behavior program that has a therapeutic component to it that children receive at High Banks and River View.
Okay, and now I remember my other question. Between the academics and the behavior reports or needs, you'll have to forgive me, I kind of mentally default back to The Miracle Worker, where Annie Sullivan had to control Helen Keller's behaviors before she could teach her anything. So I'm curious to know if there's a priority that's given to to those two when they may conflict. Which one gets attention first?
Well, we always want to make sure that we work with the child's behavior because we know if they're not behaving appropriately or regulated, then learning cannot take place. So the behavior is the priority.
Okay, I'm, I'm very glad to know that. And and just going back to one of my other questions, how, how does, how we handle the E S C students who may be violent compared to how we handle the gen ed students? And that may not even be a question you can answer because that might be a gen ed question. I don't know.
Well, just in terms of the differences, we have to look at for the E S C student, the exceptionality. And we have to ensure that the behavior is not a manifestation of that exceptionality.
Okay, if you have, if you have a high-functioning student whose I E P is not related to behavior, but who, whose I E P is not related to behavior, but who is violent, then what do you do?
That's a very general question.
I know, I'm sorry.
So that's not a question that I can answer without a specific situation, but I'd be more than happy to speak with you about that, if there's a specific situation.
If I, if I come up with a specific, I'll ask you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for all of this.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Mr. Cologne.
So, thank you. Last week, we had the opportunity to meet and go over many of my concerns. First of all, I want to congratulate you and your team on the work that you have done to support not only our E S C teachers, but all of our teachers who earlier in the year expressed or have for years lots of concerns, especially as it relates to the documentation and, I mean, arguably, knock on wood, it's been a minute since we've heard. So obviously, it's working because if it wasn't, we would know. So again, I want to thank you. I saw the numbers read, modified, and and the use, and it seems like we're finally getting into a groove of things, and and I'm grateful for that. I look forward to hearing more about the changes you're proposing, as I discussed with you in our meeting, and ensuring that we have the support that we need. You know, it's easy to put things on paper, but you want to make sure we also have the people to roll these things out in a methodical way. And what I shared with them was I'd rather move slower and do it completely than to roll it out poof, and, you know, big bang, and you don't really have enough folks to support that. So I think we've come a long way, and I'm feeling good in that we're headed in the right direction. And I'm also grateful, Dr. B, of you and your team in recognizing that we need to expand the continuum of services that we have here. You know, kids are evolving and are younger and younger, becoming more, I'll just say it this way, there's more opportunities. And so by us being able to offer those services here in Volusia County, rather than outside of Volusia County, which is the right thing to do for kids, that'll also allow us to expand that. So I look forward to seeing us do that as well because, again, that whole continuum of services is important. The one thing I didn't hear you elaborate on was, and I think there'd be a benefit to everyone, is the services that we offer at elementary that aren't offered in middle school, that are not offered in high school, that don't really match. If you could at a high level explain, because that was really fast, what, what is it that we're looking to do so that those services go across the spectrum and are offered all the way across? And if you can also include, if there's anything in the game plan with gifted, I know gifted in elementary is gifted. It's a, it's a big deal. Middle school, it kind of, you know, becomes a little bit harder, not quite as pronounced, I guess I'll say that. In high school, I think it's all, does it all just blend into A P and ACE and all of that, or, or how does that work? Or do, are we looking at any changes for that? So just that continuum. What will that look like?
Yes, so currently, we have a co-teach model that is in the secondary level, but not in elementary school, and we have a modified model.
Co-teach?
Co-teach is when we have a general education teacher and an E S C teacher working together in the same classroom, planning, giving assessments together collectively.
So we have that in middle school, but not in elementary?
That is correct.
Is that in high school as well?
Yes. And then also, our modified classroom is at the secondary level in middle and high school, and those for our students that are intellectually disabled, but it is not in elementary school. Currently, we are using V E mild and multi for those students. So our V E mild self-contained classroom, I gotcha, are our varying exceptionality students with mild disabilities. And then our multi are students who have multiple disabilities in the same room that have some cognitive global deficits. So we do not have a modified option right now for the access curriculum in elementary.
If you don't mind, share a little bit in terms of moving to that full continuum, right? I think a, a big adjustment to the, the program or the model is what we're looking into doing next year, which is to separate cognitive from behavior. You want to expand a little bit on that?
Yes, ma'am. So one thing that Ms. Brosmire you brought up is the behavior versus the academic. And one thing we've seen, especially in elementary in our current V E mild model, is that we have cognitive and behavior in the same classroom, and it's hard to meet the needs. And so we really need to make sure we're being clear and succinct when we're placing students and so that we're giving them those supports. And so that's why you heard me bring up the E S C support class, because that is a class that if you have cognitive issues, you can go to for the issue, say it's math that you're having, but then be back in the general education classroom. And then the behavior support teacher can support that student who may be having adverse behaviors in the general education classroom. Because our goal is least restrictive environment, that L R E, but we have to make sure that we have the proper supports for students in any environment that they're in in Volusia.
So translation, and correct me if I'm wrong. So we've got at times, and I've seen this, where there is a class with several students of varying exceptionalities, and one student's behaviors are way over here, and then there are students who are over here, and these kids are not learning because we're chasing this kid around all day long to keep him safe. I'm being proper here, to keep him safe. And so that detracts from the ones that have the ability sometimes, that don't have the behaviors from them being able to learn. So what you're saying is we're gonna sort of figure that part out and separate it so that we can focus on the learning of this one and not be distracted by the behaviors of
Correct, so that that student who's having the behaviors can be in a supportive environment to support the behaviors and then get to the academics where we have other students, as you described, who just need that academic support.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Goodrich?
First of all, thank you. I'm very sorry that I missed, um, the event on last Saturday. I was out of town, as you know, and you know how important this is to me. So thank you for all that you're doing. Thank you to all of you for all that you're doing, and to all the ESE staff out there listening and students. Thanks for being exceptionally awesome. Can you, and I know we went over this already, but can you just quickly give a synopsis of what graduation looks like for some of our exceptional students? Because I know it's a little bit different of a pathway than for some of the general ed students. So just to let people know that maybe didn't hear the presentation last time.
Yes, and I'm actually going to bring up Kathy Galati, if Dr. Balgman, if you don't mind, to go over deferment.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to go over deferment. Any student with an IEP has the option to defer receipt of their diploma. That means that they can graduate, march with the class, but they can come back for services that we supply here in Volusia County. So we encourage all students who do not have a path, meaning they're not going in the military, they don't have employment, they're not going to college, to return as a Volusia County student. Their diploma stays at the school. Once you receive your diploma, you're not eligible for services in any public school. But we encourage them to come back, and then we have very, uh, we have a lot of options that they could go through. Of course, if they're working on dual enrollment, they can continue that. If they're working on merit and scholar, they can continue to earn that certification. We have employment advisors in, in Volusia County. They have been working with me for probably 25 years. They're excellent, and they help the students individually gain employment out in the community. They'll maintain status with them until they're secured on that job, and then they slowly fade away. So we have students working at Publix, Stetson, throughout our, our community. We also have our, um, they can come back for community-based vocational training, where each school goes to a site out in the community to learn the skills that they need for employment. It, once they go through that, they may end up going in one of our three Project Search programs that we have at Halifax Hospital. That's for a student usually in their last year, uh, with Volusia County Schools. We have a teacher of, ESE teacher there, and we have a employment advisor. They have one hour of instruction in the morning, vocational skills, working on how to interview resumes, how, the social skills, that kind of interaction. And then they go through 10 nine-week, uh, 10-week rotations, there's three of them, at the hospital. So they're actually doing a job at the hospital. Maybe, uh, maybe a medical record clerk, they're working in dietary. We have students working in the ER, um, throughout the hospital. So they'll go through those rotations, the three of them, and at the end of the school year, we place them into employment, either at the hospital or out in the community. So we have a lot of different opportunities for our students. We encourage them all to come back because we don't want a student going through 12 years of high school, exiting and not having a plan to be successful. So we have a lot of different options. We do work with the Schoolway Cafe to employ students within Volusia County Schools. We work with the custodial staff to place them in custodial, and we also, um, have the SPOT program where they work with the facilities and maintenance. So instead of going to school again, they go to one of the maintenance hub, they follow the crew out to each site, and then at the end of that school year, hopefully they're employed at, as a Volusia County, um, employee. I was going to say student, sorry.
And so is their curriculum to get them to graduate different than Gen Ed? And are they being afforded the opportunities to get a lot of life skills?
Well, um, any student can defer. So you could be on the Gen Ed path and defer, or you could be on the access pass, uh, path where there is, um, a lot of vocational training, independent functioning training. But our deferment is open for all of our students with an IEP.
Okay. And then my other question was, well, it's not really a question. I was just going to ask if I could be put onto the list, um, of the monthly meeting at the advisory group, because I'd love to attend sometimes, as well as I'd love to go see Project Search, because I've heard fantastic things about it, and I'd love to see it in action. And that's it for questions, but I'm going to give a quick plug. Um, on April 5th, if anyone's looking to volunteer for the Special Olympics, it will be at Mainland High School. Last year, we were short, um, over 100 volunteers. So you can be a unified partner in any athletic competition you want to be a partner, and you do not have to be trained in it. So if anyone's looking to come join us, and hopefully we'll see some of the kids out there competing. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, and I will, um, do a calendar invite for Project Search.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brosmer?
Just one more comment. I wanted to, um, expand on what Mr. Cologne said about having the disruptive students who take away time from the other students. That applies in Gen Ed, too. I just wanted to expand that a little bit. That's all.
I'll go, uh, that's fine. You go ahead.
Are you sure? Okay. I want to thank you. And I'll help clarify a few of the questions, um, that came up, because I know there's so many terms, and there's so many acronyms in ESE that it becomes confusing. And it, it's confusing even for parents. You know, when they come into a meeting, I've watched their faces over the years because they don't understand sometimes what we're saying. So we have to take a step back, and we have to provide them explanations in language that's understandable. But Mr. Cologne, for secondary, um, I actually did the co-taught classes at the secondary level, and believe it or not, they were supposed to be a 70, 30% split, which meant 70% of the students, say in Algebra I, were Gen Ed, and 30% were ESE. They had an IEP because math could be their learning disability area that they needed extra support in. And I co-taught them with a wonderful, um, ESE teacher who has since retired, but I taught them, uh, it, a new student came in one day, and this is how a student said to them, "Have a seat. Ms. Haynes is going to get up there, and she's going to teach us all about what we need to know today for the math lesson. But when she's finished, Mrs. Best is going to come up behind her, and she's going to break some of it down into simpler terms for us. So if you didn't get it the first way, you'll get it the second way. But the thing is, you've got two teachers here to help you." And so that is very important, because in elementary, I also taught self-contained, um, classroom, and I've watched the pendulum go from here to here, and now we're coming back again. It used to be we didn't put all of our kids at elementary into varying exceptionalities classes. We actually had programs that were designed exactly for the area that they were struggling with. So I taught self-contained speech and language to three, from, from the age of three to, um, five, turning six-year-olds. And one of the years I taught it, I had 13 little boys. 13 little boys that you possibly couldn't even understand what they said, okay? Some, there was, there was one, all he did was mix up all of his pronouns, okay? Others, you had to try to work with them to identify what was it they were saying. So they were, it was a huge spectrum, but they were in there because every one of them, that was their primary disability. And at that same time, we had classes specifically just for our children with a learning disability. We had classes specifically for our children with behavioral issues, that that's what, we had to overcome that piece before we could move on. And then all of a sudden, we came along and we grouped them all together. And that's when the pendulum swung. So I am happy to see that we recognize taking children with multiple exceptionalities and putting them in one classroom is not necessarily the best thing for them. I watched those children that, when they got the services for their primary disability, I watched them soar. I watched them because the instruction was geared towards exactly what they needed in that room. And I'm not saying that, because listen, when you take 13 little three to six-year-old little boys, at some point, somebody's going to have a rough day and act out. But none of them were in that room because behavior was the issue. They were all there because they were struggling with speaking, and they needed to be able to learn how to communicate, because communication is an important part then of being able to learn how to read. And they got all of their academic instruction, but they also got specialized speech therapy by, our speech clinicians, you know, have master's degrees in what they needed. And I'm happy to see that we're moving back. But that's, there is a difference between elementary and secondary, and people need to realize that what works necessarily in elementary, we can't replicate in secondary because it's not going to work in secondary necessarily. Secondary is a different thing, especially with our children with learning disabilities. I had a young lady who actually was tested in first grade for gifted. She came out that yes, but she came out as a gifted, learning-disabled student. And that's rare. It's not something you hear all the time. But here was the thing, when they gave her the gifted test, and then they tested her academics, she was already, as a six-year-old, reading at a fifth to sixth grade level. And I can attest to that because one day, her mother was in pharmaceutical and blood sales, and she brought in a book and wanted to read the book, because it was her day to read to the class about blood. And I had to convince her, the rest of the six-year-olds weren't interested in this, could we pick a different book to read? But she could read that. Well, guess what? Her math came out at second grade level. So she still, in my opinion, was gifted in math, but when you took her overall IQ and you looked at her academics, she was labeled as a gifted LD child. So she just needed, we knew, she was going to need some extra support in her math. I mean, brilliant young lady, but six, I mean, so we have to take it. Now, I know that Mr. Cologne has shared, he wants you to go really slow with this piece of looking at our schools. I'm all for slow when needed, but I also am aware that we have some situations out there, and we have some schools that have 30% or more of their population on their campuses are, are ESE students. And we have placed a heavy load on the shoulders of the people at those schools in a lot of ways. So I think we need to figure out a plan to move a little bit sooner than later. We can't allow, you know, three more years to pass where we keep increasing the numbers at those schools, because we're wearing people out. And we, and some of our school buildings, because I went out and walked them with facilities, are not designed for the programs that we are hosting at those schools, or they may be designed and they have a classroom, a classroom that has a large enough bathroom, you know, to have a changing table in it and things like that, because there are so many rules attached to that. But if they have three units, three different classroom units that need a changing table, and the other two classrooms don't have bathrooms to put changing tables into, then we're not meeting the best needs of those children. And so I think, and that's why I've even asked a couple of years ago, as we're moving forward and we're renovating schools or we're building new schools, is we need to know ahead of time, what is our population going to be? And, you know, I give credit, um, that a year ago, we took a long look at McGinnis Elementary and discovered that all of the kids that were there in one of the programs, they all lived in Pearson. But we were busing them every day, quite a distance to McGinnis, and we were able to move that program to Pearson and put them back in their community. They're closer if the parents need to go on campus for any reason, and it made sense. So I just want you to continue to look at where children live, what is the program that will best meet their needs? And I'm happy to hear that we're going to pull the behavior, because we used to also have self-contained classrooms that were strictly when behavior was the primary. It didn't mean that they didn't maybe have a secondary piece that they needed, but when behavior was the primary piece, they were going into a room with smaller numbers and more support, and it gave the behavioral specialist a place to be to work every day on those, instead of a behavioral specialist now trying to hit six different rooms because we have them scattered throughout. And so I appreciate, um, and I appreciate the time you took with me, um, prior to this so that, you know, I could ask some more questions and share things, but I think we're on the right track because the pendulum is swinging back. And here's the thing, we don't need to be on either, and we need to be here in the middle, and we need to make the decisions here based on what's best for our kids. And I appreciate both of you and all of you out there for what you're doing, because I know it takes a lot of time and effort. So thank you. Ms. Brosmer?
I, you raised an interesting question that wouldn't have occurred to me. On the geographic portion of this consideration, how does rezoning work with that?
So we work with them, but I'll give an example in your area. You have an elementary school in your area that already, four years ago, had a significant number of students on campus with IEPs with a large variety of primary pieces. And someone decided to take a school and take the kids from that school and move them to your school, making that school in your area even more overcrowded with, and, and so it becomes a lot more work for administrators, especially when behaviors are happening. Because if you have a lot of kids on campus that can be set off in a moment and they're running, we don't have enough people on elementary campuses to, you know, get them and get them back in. And I'm happy to tell you, like, later, which school it is and which school they were moved from, but you have a school in your area that has a substantial number of ESE programs on campus with, because they closed down, they, they, they moved the whole units out of another school.
So...
And bussed them.
In, in the, in the rezoning process, uh, are the, are the number of ESE students being rezoned a factor in the rezoning decisions? I guess I'm still uncertain about that.
They, they have access to where children are, where they currently live, and so do they live in a rezoning area, but where are we currently busing them? We're busing a lot of kids in Volusia County. I'll speak about the schools just in District One. There are two elementary schools in District One that are heavily ESE, and we've had to turn Gen Ed rooms into ESE rooms, and that's when I talk about the room not being set up or being able to have the right equipment in it to necessarily meet the needs of the students. And both of those are 30% or higher of their entire population, and yet they're coming from schools, they're, most of those children are not zoned for that school, but they're being bused there, because that's where we put the programs.
Okay. Thank you.
You can't, and at high, and here's the difference between middle and high. We're not typically in middle and high busing a child out of their zone to another middle or high, because in middle and high, we meet those needs in a different way. Because we look at, do they need to still be in a self-contained or, like, a separate classroom for that? Or are we now addressing it in a co-taught situation because they just need the extra support in math? Or do we have support facilitation coming in? We look at that. So for middle and high, they get a schedule more designed for where they at now, and which type of classroom do they need to learn in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
I just want to say thank you to the, to the team, some of you are here. This group of individuals here have worked 24/7, and I, I promise Ms. Copeland that after her third year, the job will get easier. There is a lot of, um, adjusting that needed to take place this past year. As you guys know, I also want to thank the board, because you know that last year during our Listen and Learn, ESE was one of those topics that came up, to the point that I even said to a few of our teachers, "I'm well aware, just give us the time, I'm well aware." So I want to thank you, because this year, it's so much better, but not only evidenced and seen by us here, but also by every group that has been out here. For, for example, we've had DOE, DOE here, maybe seven times so far, and which each visit, we're seeing that they are seeing evidence that we are improving in the right ways. Also, with our DOJ, we meet with them monthly. So I want to thank you guys for all of the work that you've been doing behind the scene, and, and clearly, it's seeing, we're seeing that that's permeating into the culture of our organization. I visited a school, Horizon, um, just last Friday, and I walked into the front office, and a teacher was there, and it so happened that the teacher had all of the documentation for a different placement for our student. But I talked to the teacher about the documentation, and she was just raving and talking about Ed Modify, how much easier it has made in terms of, you know, pulling those documentation, reviewing, and so forth. And I remember year one with Ed Modify, right? We went through some growing pains, but that's all process when you're instituting changes. But I want to thank you guys, because for what it's worth, meeting the needs of every learner... learner is starting to really permeate into the culture of our, and fabric of our organization. So thank you. Ms. Copeland, you've got two more years and then after that it gets easier. And to the entire team that's here, thank you for all the work that you've been doing on and behind the scenes.
And I need to put in one plug since Kathy came up. For those of you that have not had a chance yet to attend a Project Search graduation, I believe she probably already has the date.
Yeah.
May 28th.
And I will send you the link.
Okay. But May 28th, you have to go to Project Search graduation. Ms. Thompson and I have attended. And bring, bring some tissues with you. I'll be honest with you because every year I tell myself, it doesn't matter what story that that child tells, I'm not going to cry. And then you hear their story and all the things they overcame. And I'll never forget the young man that said he, his original goal was he wanted to work for Panera. And he said, and I'm already working and I've already gotten two paychecks. And I mean, it's just, those are our children that, what Halifax Hospital does along with Volusia County Schools to prepare those children to have an opportunity to play a productive part in society is just phenomenal. And I did have one mother call me about the facilities piece because she said, my husband and I just thought our son would live with us forever and we would take care of him forever. And she said, she called me after he'd worked one year with facilities and she said, he's worked one full year now with facilities. And Ms. Haynes, he gets up every morning excited to go to work and be on one of those facility teams. And she said, we see a future for him that we didn't see when he was growing up. And that's what it's all about. It's finding that future and finding a path so that every student has a plan and what they can and can't do. So thank you for everything you do and thank you Kathy.
Thank you all.
It's fabulous. All right. We are moving right along to item 3.01, House Bill 1473, our quarterly report. Dr. Bogdan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Captain Smith, our Director of Safety and Security, he's going to share with your quarterly update regarding 1473. And it will probably be the shortest presentation that you would receive.
Be shorter than last time.
Probably.
Good afternoon, Superintendent, Madam Chair, and Board members. I'm Captain Todd Smith, the Director of Safety and Security for Volusia County Schools. Today, we will be discussing the quarterly safety report in accordance with Florida State This presentation aligns with Policy 511, Safety of Facilities. This presentation also aligns with Guardrail 2, Providing Conditions That Enhance Student In accordance with House Bill 1473, school districts are required to report four things each quarter. The number and percentage of schools, including charter schools, inspected or re-inspected during the quarter. The number and percentage of schools with no school safety requirement deficiencies. In the second quarter, 21 schools were inspected or re-inspected by the Office of Safe Schools. This represents 27.27% of the schools inspected or re-inspected. 19 schools had no school safety requirement deficiencies. Therefore, 90.48% of schools had no school safety requirement deficiencies. Before I conclude this presentation, I'd like to touch on something real quick. There are hundreds of ways that a school can fail this audit. If a single door is unlocked in the entire school, they fail. If a single gate is out of compliance, they fail. If they're missing a single document of the hundreds that are required, they fail. Of the two schools with deficiencies, Mainland High School had a single safe zone identifier that was missing and it was immediately resolved. And Henson Middle School had a door lock malfunction at the beginning of the school day. The incident had been reported to staff prior to the audit that happened the same day. And before the lock could be fixed, they got audited, which obviously the door is found unlocked. Otherwise, both schools would have had a perfect audit out of all the ways that they could have failed. The principals and staff are taking these audits serious. The results show that they care. We have created a culture surrounding safety and security and we are working hard to ensure And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions? You did a great job.
I do.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, wait. Yes, sorry. So I was at Atlantic High School this week and they were asking me, and I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question, but I'm going to, for their automotive class, they can't use their cards to go outside to the automotive building to access their tools and the things they need to get to for that class without a teacher. Can we look into seeing if there's a way to do that safely?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Captain.
So at this time, we're going to take a short break. And let's be back in here at 2:00 PM for the third topic.
Welcome back. It is 2:01 PM and we are now moving on to item 3.02, Potential Prototype Design for Elementary Schools. Dr. Balgman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members. As you know, we had this discussion at least two years ago when we start talking about reviewing prototypes for elementary, K-8, and secondary. So the team has been doing some research and they're here to share with you a prototype that's still in the works, and this is in particular for elementary school. We have with us here today Ms. Patty Core, who's our Chief Operating Officer, along with Mr. Ron Young, our Director, and Tom Brown, our Coordinator.
And BJ Vogus. All right. Good afternoon. Thank you all for having us here today. Yes, this is in the works and it's, as you see on the title, it says Potential Prototype Design for Elementary Schools. And as the team goes through it, you'll see why this would be considered a good prototype for us to be able to expand and contract a site as necessary based on the physical plant or the land that we're building on and some other information you'll see coming shortly. This presentation conforms to our district policies number 603 and 605. 603 outlines the design guidelines and educational specifications for Volusia County schools when we build, and then the construction delivery method in 605. This also aligns to guardrail three of our strategic plan, improve operational efficiency, and maximize resources to support student learning.
Ms. Core asked me to do a little bit of research on this, so I dove into statutes, dove into the Internet. I also spoke with our friends in Orange Seminole, Amber Vard County about prototype buildings that they're using right now. And so this presentation is laid out just to kind of give you an overview of the prototype design concept, which is basically a strategy to reduce capital expenditures, create efficiencies, save money, and do a few more things that'll help our students as we go through this. It's basically building the same building over and over again with modifications to fit the site. Not only is it a good idea, but it's actually mandated by Florida statute that if we have two elementary, two middle, two high school buildings that are going to be happening within our five-year work plan, it is mandated that we use those same construction designs and seek the efficiencies of a prototype whenever and, well, not whenever possible, but it's mandated that we make it possible. Trying to get ahead of that, we did this research and looked into the concept of a school building prototype design. And as I said before, the number one reason most school districts, most businesses look for a prototype is to save money. Let's face it. One of the main ways we save money is on the front end, the pre-construction, the design costs. Some of the examples that were shared with me by other districts are up to a 5% savings, which if we had, the example I gave, if we had a $60 million construction project, you'd look at saving maybe $3 million on the design, the pre-construction, not to mention efficiencies you could be created by buying the same materials over again multiple times. And if you knew you had a couple of projects coming down the road, you could get ahead of that. Save money is there. The other place where we save money is in the operation of the facility and in the maintenance of the facility. And quite frankly, you can even save time and time is money. Because if our employees and even if we know what that school looks like before we get there, it's quicker to get to wherever it is you're working. If you've got 27 different designs, you're not exactly sure always where you're going when you show up at a campus. Some of you may have had that experience as you visit the various schools. So money is important, time is important, but really appealed to me as a former principal is the fact that it supports student learning. It creates consistency, it reduces risks, and it creates a sense of educational equity across the district, and it also creates a consensus among stakeholders. So as we're looking at developing new schools, new projects, we're sort of coming from the same place for all of our communities across the district. Just kind of how a prototype design works and what are the pieces of it that we need. Prototype schools are typically designed to be efficient, flexible, customizable. It's primarily suitable for elementary schools. That's where it really fits the best. It's sort of difficult at the secondary level, and it's really a challenge at a high school level because of the various programs, athletics, the different things that are happening at those schools. And the reality is, we don't build as many of those high schools within the same timeframe. So in terms of taking a prototype and moving it, it might be several years, which means you've had a lot of changes in building, technology, et cetera, as you look at high schools and secondary schools. The beautiful thing about a prototype school, as I said before, is the idea that it can be used again and again with slight modifications just to adjust to the sites as we build schools across the district. Your team recommends that we look at the Edith I. Stark Elementary School currently under construction as a prototype design. We feel it meets the criteria in terms of being compact and efficient. It's easily expandable. It can be customized to meet school sites. It is modern. We know it's safe. It's going to be secure, and it's designed to accommodate about 650 students, which is sort of our sweet spot in terms of building new schools. In doing the research, I got the input of principals, got some principal voices, talked to some people out in the fields about things that they were looking for, and sort of created this checklist, and the Stark prototype kind of marks all the boxes. I did want to call out because some spacious front office lobby, since we've had security, a lot of times our parents are crammed up front. We want to have the ability to have a lobby area that's big enough for them. And another piece is the office and conference space with itinerant workers, with the number of assessments and services that we're providing to different students. We need to have some of those things that we don't have necessarily in the older school buildings in terms of conference space. And the big piece that came and resonated from everybody was flexibility. The ability to have a large cafeteria space that's flexible and rooms that can be flexed depending on the needs of the school, depending on the time of the year, because we know during testing and other times, we have various needs, and we feel like the Edith I. Stark model supports that. So to give you a little more information and tell you more about that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Good afternoon. So the next couple of slides are just the elevations of what Edith Stark is going to look like. It's a much simpler design, so it will fit pretty much within any neighborhood and not look out of place. This here is just a look at the bus drop-off pickup area, the backside of the campus. Now, the next slide is the floor plan that is being constructed at Stark now. As Mr. Vogus had mentioned earlier, with this being a proposed prototype, it is flexible and adaptable to pretty much any site that we would encounter. Currently, this plan is designed for 650 student stations. If you'll notice, at the top right corner of this floor plan, you'll see a little cut-out area there. That was intentionally done to reduce the number of student stations down for this particular building. So there are six classrooms that could be added into that location there to expand the student capacity. So by doing that, you could increase capacity of this particular design to 770 student stations. And again, if we get into a situation where you need a larger capacity elementary school, additional classrooms can be added onto the end of that building at the far right very easily, and you can do a one-story or two-story addition onto that, depending on how many student stations you would require. One of the things I'd like to point out with this particular floor plan is that all of the square footage within this design is utilized to its maximum potential. Some of our previous designs had large spaces that kind of didn't lend themselves very well for student use. So we've addressed that and have now utilized the square foot as best as possible to accommodate the student education in these facilities. Also, with this particular design, the main corridors are situated to where they are very easy to supervise as students are traversing these corridors. So you can stand kind of in a center location and see in all directions. Now, these here are just a couple of aerials from last month of the progress of Stark. And again, you'll notice in the areas where that six classrooms had been removed to get the student station count down, so that would be where you could add student station classrooms as well as on the end of the building. And this is a linear building, so it, like I said, lends itself to a lot of site conditions.
That concludes our presentation. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Mr. Cologne?
So I look forward to possibly approving this sometime in January or February of next year. The reason I say that is every school that we've built has always been the newest, latest, greatest, wonderful, most innovative, everything, until we move in and we figure out this was working well, this is not working well. So while I appreciate the insight on the Stark Elementary, not that we're not creating a high expectation, I'd be curious to see, once we start using it and abusing it, to then be able to say, okay, this worked out really well, this is... Because, you know, there are times, you know, my Deltona Middle School is beautiful. I mean, it's beautiful. You walk in and there's this beautiful, huge foyer, looks like the Amway Arena, same architects, you know? And then in retrospect, I'm thinking, okay, what do we do with the space? Well, could it have been not quite so grand and maybe we could have used that somewhere else? Could we have made the classrooms six inches bigger this way and used that space? And so I am all about having the prototype. I'm just, I'd wait to hear back the feedback from the folks at the new Stark to tell us whether or not this is great or it's not. You know, I had the honor of going to the new Terry T., and there's opportunities there. You know, Deltona Middle, there's opportunities to Moca. I haven't heard anything, but I'm sure my email will fill up now. You know, so again, it's taking all of that feedback, just as you said. And so I'm all for having a prototype. I just, you know, I'd be curious to hear from the folks once they move in if it's good or not. Thank you.
That's part of the beauty of the prototype, is that ability to learn from experience and make the tweaks and adjustments as we go.
Thank you.
Good, Rich.
I agree with Mr. Cologne. Let's see if it works before we use it as a prototype. But my question is, my understanding is that in our elementary schools, we don't break even financially until we're at about 750 students. So if we have the opportunity to add on, I understand that's there. When I've been involved in construction, doing it the first time is a significant savings rather than building it and then later adding on. So why wouldn't we build to the 750 to start?
It's actually 550, and it's 90% of the 550. So it's not that you just have a school that has 550 seats, you have to have at least 90% capacity of a 550-seat school. So at Stark, the original design was for 800, but it just, the area, the LOS in the area just doesn't support an 800-seat school. That's why it was changed to 650.
So you're saying 550 is where we break even?
Yes.
So I'm getting different numbers from different places.
If you ask Todd, he'll tell you it's 750.
Yeah, Todd says 750. So maybe we need some clarification. Yeah. Maybe we need to get some clarification on that. Because I don't want to build schools that lose money, right? And if it doesn't, fantastic. I just want a better understanding of it.
Sure.
Okay.
But let me ask you a question. Seriously, this is for me to understand. I'm hearing that when we build, we have to have a 90% capacity, I mean, to be able to fill 90%.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think that's where some of it is coming from, because you look at the areas that you're open to in terms of the feeder pattern, right? And how many students you're going to be generating in schools that, like for example, your Stark, right? If you look at the feeder pattern for Stark, it will tell you realistically how many students that Stark is zoned for. So it might be another issue, it might be like looking at the zoning for the schools. It's so many factors. Financially, I believe you're absolutely right, it's about 650-something students that you have to have to just break even, right? But I think for building purposes, we have to be able to look at the zoning for those schools and be able to fill 90% of it. Okay. So which will make it more of a relooking at the zoning?
May I add something? So there's going to be rezoning taking place for Stark, because there's not, the students that are zoned there right now can't support this school, but we are overcrowded at the surrounding schools, so the rezoning is going to take place to put more students into Stark, into the brand-new school building.
So are we busing them there?
No, they'll be with, most of them will be within the two-mile radius. The problem is, we have, so if you think about 1792/Woodland Boulevard in Deland, we have three schools sitting on, elementary schools sitting on the west side. They're all under two miles to each other. And then on the other side, we have three schools, elementary schools, all sitting within less than two miles from each other. So we have six elementary schools sitting in Deland, and we have elementary schools that are overcrowded. So we did a piece of rezoning a year ago, and that, we only touched Woodward and Citrus Grove because the growth is happening further west, going towards Lake County. But we told them at the time, the parents, that we did rezone between those two, they would not get rezoned a second time. But then there are parts that we left on that side, also immediately right across the boulevard, that will be coming over because freedom is also way over capacity. We're trying to not add additional buildings to those schools and take them up, like to vary to 1,000 or more kids, because at that point, it's not effective for elementary school. A thousand is, you need to stop. You don't need to go over 1,000 kids at an elementary school level. But we just have not done the rezoning piece because we can't rezone them until the school is ready to put them in there. Ms., do you have anything else, Ms. Goodrich? Ms., do you have anything else, Ms. Goodrich? Ms. Brosmer?
To your point, actually to a number of the points that have been made in the last couple of minutes. In one of my past projects, I had to evaluate, I had to study and evaluate and what have you, on school concurrency and district size and economies of scale. And for elementary schools, 650 is just about right. So that, the 1,000 is just way too many. And I like kind of aiming lower than the 650, and then we have room to grow when we need to. So I just wanted to toss that in because it was consistent with the studies that I've done.
Okay, so I already said this, so I wasn't surprised other people came up with it. I already told you guys, I can't, I can't go with this being the prototype till after it's opened and everybody has moved in. Because if, you know, we did use a prototype on some of our schools here in Volusia County at one point. You know, when we built Volusia Pines and Forest Lake and DeBery all at the same time, understanding that we put a second story on DeBery, but Volusia Pines and Forest Lake were built with the same prototype. And then we used that prototype a few more times. And I'm all for prototypes, because Seminole County has used prototypes for years. They have for their elementary, middle, and high, you know, back when the growth hit them and they were building. And it does save money, and it's more consistent, it's much easier to understand the layout, you know, it works for Captain Smith and his team if they have to go in for a safety and security issue, all of that. But I'm not sold yet that this is the prototype. Because until I walk it and I see it, because if we look at the new schools that have opened in the time period that Mr. Cologne and I have been here on the board, Pearson is absolutely beautiful, but the classrooms are about this big, and they have all these big learning areas that can't be used unless the teacher goes to the learning area with the children, because you can't send five-year-olds out to a learning area unsupervised. Teachers could lose their teaching certificate. So those learning areas are not typically used very much at that school, which becomes, the classroom teachers could have had a bigger space than this. And everywhere I've gone with you guys, you hear me say, the space needs to be in the classroom so that they, teachers can do the activities they need to do, especially for our primary learners. They need to be able to move to the floor and then move to a center or station. They can't sit in a seat all day long. That is not what is best. That's not how they learn the best. We look at Pride. Pride Elementary, beautiful two-story building, but when you walk in, it's like Deltona Middle. It has this huge area that's just, it's not used for anything. I'll be honest with you, probably the school you guys did the best job as a two-story, and I'm not saying that it should be, but at the time when we finally started building two-story schools, is actually DeBery, because DeBery does not have a wasted space like Pride or a space where you go to Citrus Grove and you still have to get through a set of double doors into the other doors and things like that. But that was also built right before we went to class size amendment, so their classrooms are a nice size, okay? And those kids have the ability to move about, and that is important in elementary school. I'm not against learning lab areas, but, and I was happy to hear that there is a point where you can stand in the hallways and you can see all the way down, because George Marx, way those wings go off, you know, and we didn't open it, but what, three years, was it three years ago? You can't stand and see everything. And, you know, when we have a principal and an assistant principal on campus, if they can't stand somewhere to be able to see everything, or they can't put a teacher there, that's a safety issue too. So I like what you said, and you said some of the right words that spoke to me about this, but until I actually see it and we move stuff into it, I can't give you an approval on it.
I don't think there's any disagreement. I think the reason that we brought the school today was to bring attention to it. We think it could possibly be a prototype in the future. So when we open it and you're touring it and, you know, pay particular attention about sightlines and that sort of thing, there's a, there's a fine line between enough space and wasted space, right? So I think the guys have done a really good job with Song and Associates on this school of providing those sightlines, doing away with some of the wasted space. And I think it's a really, on paper, it's a really efficient use of space, and we've said the same thing, that maybe this is a little premature, but we did want to bring it to you because we want to walk it ourselves, so.
And I support a prototype. I really do. I support it for the cost savings and all that. We just need to see, I mean, that's part of why when we went to Polk County and we saw the K-8 being built, okay? We went back. Once the kids were moved in and the teachers and the office specialists and everybody were there to ask them, is the space working and how is it working? And is there anything they would have changed? And I just, I'm with you. And so I, it's fine that we bring it up now because this is the way we need to move. We need to go to prototypes. I mean, Atlantic and Pine Ridge were built off the same model, only Atlantic was one less wing at the time because it didn't have enough students, you know, to support that additional wing, but, you know, they were built. But codes change, and the safety piece hit us hard, all of us. That safety piece is probably the piece that nobody thought, I mean, we thought we had our kids safe, but that brought a lot of challenges, so. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're looking forward to seeing this school. All right, at this time, it is 2:25 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.